Dan Harrison's here, Karen Sanders. Linda Martin.
Present.
Thank you, Linda. Gary? Brian?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Excellent. David? Steve? And Christopher? Okay, I think that's three of us, and I think that I was told that three, um, three separate districts is a quorum. And so that we are good to go, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, so. Then we, the next item is approving the resolution to keep Kern beautiful. Keep Kern Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings need, I'm looking for approval. Well, it is, do I need to look for public comments on that, or are we just approving it?
We're just approving it.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion and a second to. Continue doing it the way we're doing it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Who's have to second it, please? Who is this, who seconded?
I can second it, this is Gary.
Oh, hi Gary, yeah, great. I've got you down here, Gary, second. And then all in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Brian. Excellent, okay, thank you. The next item is item four, approving the minutes from October 19th. And they are on your screen now. Because Myra is being so thoughtful to help me with this, so. Any comment about the meet, the minutes from last meeting? Any public comment about those minutes? Okay. Do I, would somebody make a motion and a second to approve the minutes then, as they are?
I'll make a motion, Brian, do make a motion to accept the. Minutes as they are.
Thank you, Brian.
I can second, Linda.
Linda, thank you, Linda. And then all in favor, any call in favor of approving the minutes as presented?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
That's.
Only nine fifty-three.
Okay, very good. Alright, so number five is to keep Kern Beautiful Committee fundraising, discuss the sponsorship form letter. And is that? Form letter, Myra, do you have that handy?
Yes, I do, let me go ahead and.
Good, we're sent out today at ten.
Thank you. So this is a, a letter that we are sending out soliciting. Sponsorships at the, at the various levels, and I believe the discussion point is what those levels should be highlighted in yellow. Bronze, silver, gold. And. So does anybody have any comment, thoughts on this?
Sorry.
Any thoughts in general on whether we should do it, or any thoughts on? The donation amounts?
Linda has comments.
Oh.
Gary, did, I think Gary, you put your hand up first, I'll go after you.
Um, my recommendation would be on the gold sponsorship to be a thousand, silver at five hundred, and bronze at two fifty.
Thousand. Five hundred, two fifty. Okay. Any other com, Linda, did you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I was wondering if Ray Scott was on the call, because he is keep California beautiful, if he had any input on this. Um, with the different levels, and then I was just wondering if we wanted to kind of talk about what was. Available to each sponsorship, for example, um, like bronze sponsorship. So I guess the shout outs are a little different. And then the other ones are two years, I don't know, it's just, is everyone okay with? The varying. Um, promotional opportunities available to each sponsor.
Do you feel like they need to be more differentiated?
Well, do we want to flip this so that?
Yes.
Gold is on top, because it's kind of backwards?
Yep, absolutely. Should go, it should go gold to bronze.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. So do you feel like it needs, there needs to be more differentiation, or it needs to be more robust in? One or the other categories?
What's your? Well, what is, what does everyone think, I mean, Gary, do you deal with a lot of these sponsorships, I mean, is it going to be difficult? To get the logos on all the promotional materials, I mean, should we vary those a little? Because that's a lot, we've got t-shirts, reusable bags, and, and banners, where some of these are only available like for a one year, so we're going to have the cost of. Redoing those, right? I don't know how much that stuff is, if we're gonna have to redo it.
I'm trying to pull this up on my computer real quick, so I can read through it. I think the bronze level, which is the lowest level, I think that should just kind of be limited to. Uh, to press release and promotional materials, and not shirts, or bags, or banners.
I agree.
Um, I think the bronze is always, for us with the conservancy, the bronze is always the lowest package, is pretty much just. Um, you know, your logo at the event banner, and just some social media shout outs, and email recognitions, and that's it, that's like the most simple. And then silver would, is where you're going to start getting into, like getting banners individually, t-shirts and stuff like that. Um, our events, we usually just make one banner with all the sponsors on it, and that's for the event itself, but. Um, a lot of the sponsors we deal with have their own banners, so they usually just drop it off for us to use, and then we give it back to them, so we're not buying it constantly from them. Buying banner every single year.
Excellent, so. My, on this banners, is this, it makes sense, what, uh, Gary's saying, that it would be all the logos on one banner? We're not talking about separate banners for each sponsor, is that correct, where it says flyers, t-shirts, receive that line item? Because I agree, at two hundred and fifty dollars, you could spend all of it on. On that. All that stuff is going to be, be expensed in the first year.
Yeah, and. It looks like that package is only one year, silver is two years package. And then gold is three year, I mean, we could also. Kind of. Hear it, I guess, to have a bigger logo on a banner for gold, and then tear it down, or maybe just leave the bronze off?
The gold sponsors can always be on top of the banner, and then that could be the first row, the second row can be the silver sponsors, which would be just a little smaller of a logo. And then the bronze would be the bottom line, well, that's kind of how we have our setup every year with the banners, and we always. Solicit the same donors and sponsors every single year, so we're not spending money on banners constantly, but. It just happens, and you just, you, you add one new sponsor, you have to go get a whole new banner done. Um, and that's downside to it, so regardless, it's going to be a new banner, and if, I don't like the three year timelines, because what if we have people joining in between now and three years? Um, it's just, we're going to have to keep making new products, new banners, and it's kind of weird to lock people in for a three year period. And if they don't come through, or two years, or three years down the line, they don't want to be part of it, or they stop showing up, you have to deal with sponsors who. Will pay, but they just never show up, and they just don't want to be a community partner anymore. Um, I think a year is just better, and it's just more beneficial for us to keep the money flowing on a yearly basis, instead of every couple of years.
So that we, so what you do is you just go renew, it's a one year thing, you go back, back to the same organization, they renew the next year?
Yeah, pretty much, we do it every single year.
Yes, and they, they just renew, it's not a, it's not a long term.
Yeah, there's nothing long term, it's every single year, and then, like I said, they all have their own banners. Uh, and we borrow it, because there's so many events here in Kernville, so everybody's used to having their own banners.
Right, I think that, I like that idea, that makes sense. Makes sense for them not have to, for the county not have to manage it, and just what you said, somebody backs out, now what?
Yeah.
They can, can't make them pay it. I agree. So, um, it says, highlighted in the silver and gold, if there's any other perks or benefits that the committee can offer, is, is there anything? Gary, in your experience from looking at this, that you find organizations are attracted to, that is not included?
Um. What we do, so when we have like our big sponsors, like a presenting sponsor, or a title sponsor for an event. Those are the sponsors that we'll usually do a shout out on, when we're doing a news segment with one of the news channels who come cover the event. Um, so every year, we make sure we give recognition to that sponsor. And when the volunteers are around, we do like our safety talking, our prep talking, we let everybody know who the sponsors are. But specifically, the title sponsor for making it happen, since they're spending the most money, and it's covering all the supplies and equipment that we need for this event. Um, I think that's where you want to have that gold sponsor, is the one that you're pretty much going to put on the news, or put in a lot of press. To let people know, like, you print Clean Beautiful's Earth Day event is presented by so and so.
Alright.
Public recognition is what they want. On the level, people that are spending that kind of money, they want to make sure people in Bakersfield, Kern County know that that's them.
Right. Uh, let's see, COVID on press releases. So I wonder if, when the, so when the county has some of these. Uh, ribbon cutting ceremonies, do they? Is the, is this committee represented in that, could it, could it, or could it be represented? Or these sponsors could be acknowledged?
I'd have to confirm with Alicia on that one, um, I'll get back to the committee next meeting.
Okay.
So we can get that question answered.
As I, Gary's right in that the more recognition, especially things that don't cost us anything to do, just.
Yeah, we'll, to be thoughtful about the events, and like the ribbon cutter you're saying, I mean, what if some of these sponsors are not. Uh, in line with that event, or it's not an unrelated event to keep Kern Beautiful. Um, so we just have to make sure we pick and choose where we plug the sponsors, sponsors in.
Okay. Are you saying that we should probably not look at those ribbon cuttings, or you want to be selective in what?
Um, well, I mean, we can wait for Alicia to come back with that decision, but, I mean, depending what the ribbon cutting is, what we're doing. Um, you know, if it's something that we're doing, let's say in Bakersfield, and maybe recognize the Bakersfield sponsors, and not all the sponsors.
I see.
Just, it really depends, I mean, it's kind of, you know, ribbon cutting is specific, like what are we cutting ribbon for, a park, well. You know, what if there's a few sponsors, they're not, they're not into the parks, then their money is for like Mojave, or whatever it is, another park. Does that sponsor want to be involved in that or not?
Right.
And then do you think we're going to do banners per district, just because, you know, I do community cleanups, Gary does community cleanups, it's great to have, you know, all the volunteers, like maybe in front of one of our banners. Um, I can certainly put them up at our bulk items, things like that, to just promote, if, you know, the committee thinks that. That's a good way to help promote.
I agree with you on that, I think each district should have their own banners for.
That makes sense.
Sponsors.
Makes sense for the press release following to have your banner, the people who participated as a photo opportunity that then gets distributed as a press release.
Yeah.
That makes sense. That makes sense. So, Gary, who, is there any consistency in the type of companies that, that give every year, or is it pretty broad based in?
It's, it's, for us, it's pretty consistent, when we have our fundraisers and our events, it's almost all of them are the same every single year. Um, every now, you'll have one drop, or one gets added. Um, it just, it really depends, um, BJ's Restaurant has been a sponsor for our Great Kern River cleanup every single year. Um, but this year, we had to switch to the Upper River for our cleanups, just because of just logistics and concession issues. Um, and BJ's was not able to sponsor because it's way all the way up in another area, it was too far for them to come up and cater the event. So we had to get another sponsor for that, which was the Kern River Brewing Company. So that had to change, you know, so it depends, like the sponsors for the Upper River Kernville area could be different than what sponsors we get for the Lower River area.
Do they tend to be retail, or do they tend to be more corporate, what, what tends to be, is there a, a business type that you find more open to?
It's a combination of both, um, we always get, um, up here for us, we get a lot of the private campgrounds. Um, a lot of the companies that are involved with some type of hospitality or recreation related to the outdoors for this area. Um, you know, the people that make money off the tourism and recreation tourism up here are the ones that usually give the most to us. To make sure money's being put back into the environment and taken care of for the following year. Um, but we do get some corporate sponsorships from, uh, renewable energy companies that want to be involved, and they bring their staff out for company outings with us. Um, so, yeah, they could, you know, vary, just depends how attractive your campaign is. Uh, and where that company sees themselves fitting in and benefiting. Because other than they, the company is just, you know, they're going to come out, and they want to get recognition, and they want to make sure their company is being highlighted and or acknowledged for the community efforts.
Mm-hmm. Linda, do you, have you, do you have any comments around that, or what companies, what types of companies? Might be interested?
So I was kind of thinking of, um, I can ask the hauling group, uh, just because we already do all these bulk item cleanups, community cleanups. Um, I was also going to ask, um, some of the folks I know in the oil industry, because usually they're pretty good stewards of trying to. Help with community, uh, cleanups and whatnot, um, I also in the Shafter area, so I have, um, target distribution, sometimes we'll send, um. Staff for, uh, cleanups, and then also, um, I have a roofing company that likes to do projects within our communities, so. You know, it's free, well, it's not exactly free, but it's company goodwill, um, to keep our areas clean, so, I mean, I, I have no problem going and asking them. It's advertisement for them with it, all within Kern County, you know, so I would hope that they would. Would want to show that they're good stewards and good neighbors within our area, so those were the ones that I was thinking of going after, um, but.
Given, given that, is there anything in looking at these? The benefits of being a sponsor, is there anything that you feel like those organizations would, would be more attracted to than?
Oh, I think the name recognition's for sure, I mean, having their name up in gold on a banner, if, if I can put it at different community cleanups, would that they're a part of. I, I think that they would like that, if we have, um, press releases where we can mention them, um, I think that they would like that. You know, I would need to go talk to them, but I'm assuming that, I, I only got that this morning, and I've been in a bunch of meetings, so I, um. I just glanced at it, I haven't really got a chance to analyze it, but everything on there looked pretty good, I like the idea of the banner, just because we can take pictures and put those up.
I do too.
You know. On our social medias.
I like it, oh, by the way, I should have announced that this is being recorded, I'm sorry. You're being, this meeting's being recorded, I just glanced at, I like it, I think that, um, are we? My, do I need to take, am I asking for a vote on this, or is this just a discussion?
Um, I believe this is just a discussion, but let me double check.
Because we, we have comments, I mean, I don't know if we're going to vote on the amounts, or.
Do we want to put in the letter, Gary, do we need to say like what we need the money for, such as like bags, and, uh, you know, the grabbers, or paintbrushes? And maybe highlight what, what we're doing?
Yeah, that always helps, um, I always have like a picture in, uh, our, the applications of volunteers. With trash and their pickers in their hands, and, um, like a little paragraph, kind of like statement, like this is what the money's being used for, is to go to outfit the volunteers, and. Get them all the equipment they need, and this and that, uh, with us, we buy a lot of the equipment with the sponsorship money. And this year, what we did was, we gave everybody their own equipment, and they can take it home, they got to keep their own trash pickers and all that. And that was because we had sponsors step up and cover those costs for us. Um, and that went really well with all the volunteers that showed up, they're really excited about being able to take this stuff home, and keep it in their car, and use it whenever they're up in the forest, or wherever they see trash.
Now, we, we had a picture of that, uh, river cleanup we did, I mean, I think that has a huge impact.
Yeah, totally.
We could add some pictures to it.
Yep, any photo like that, that, you know, the donors want to see that kind of stuff, they want to see where their money's going.
Yeah, so I didn't see the photo, but I imagine it had, you had big, lots of bags of trash, or. Items picked up that showed the impact that you made in the cleanup?
Yeah, um, it, I think it was a photo of us in a whitewater raft, we're going down the river. And it's a very unique cleanup that we do with the rafting companies up here, uh, they take the volunteers down the canyon. Uh, on the river, and we, pretty much anytime we see trash and graffiti, we just stop, get out the boats, pick it up, clean it up, and keep going forward. And that's a, you know, like, that's like one of our best selling points, is showing those photos of the extent that we go through, and the partners that we have. That we bring into these, you know, we have politicians that come on these events, we have community members that come on these events, and they want to participate in everything we do down here on the river.
Nice. Nice, nice.
There was also a great picture after, where we had like, it was a whole trailer was full of trash, right, Gary?
Yeah.
That's a huge impact, and it's awareness to, you know, when we go camping, leave no trace behind.
Yeah, totally, there are photos of trailers and all the trash that gets hauled out of there, and it gives them a sense of, um, this is what it's, this is what the volunteers are taking out, this is how much trash comes out of there.
I like it. I like it, so, in addition to this letter, then, we want to have an aspect of it, to have. Some photos that indicate what you've described, as well as maybe what you have as well, Linda, some photos of impact.
Photos, and then just what their money's going to be spent.
Yeah.
On, you know, just the impact that their donation is going to have within Kern County.
And what, what, what the money will be used for.
Yeah.
I like it, I think that's great suggestions. Any other suggestions on any part of this?
Just answering your question, Dan, it was just discussion, so we're good, we don't have to vote on anything.
Okay. Yeah, so we've got comments, we'll share those comments with Alicia, then come back next month, and. With maybe an updated document, with some of these changes integrated in it, or am I ahead of myself? What's that?
Yes, so Alicia actually make those changes when.
Okay.
And if not a follow up, you know.
Great, that's great suggestions, thank you, everyone. Any other comments on the letter? Okie doke. Um, well then. Any, are there any community comments, so do I ask for community comments on that, or?
Yes, Ray Scott, um, Kern County Metro Hallers. Um, I mean, Gary, you can, is, what, understand sponsorships, as I can see that. Um, the levels that you're asking for are not large levels. And so, you know, utilizing all of your personal and business relationships will. Will, will, you'll gain a lot from, from utilizing them, like I said, um. Even at keep Bakersfield beautiful, this is a low sponsorship compared to what we do in Bakersfield. And especially on the keep California beautiful level, so these will be very, a key, you know, people will like them because they are a low amount. And I believe what Gary said, keeping them to one year increments, this way you have the renewals that come in each, each year, to keep building on it.
Ray, are you suggesting that we keep these suggested levels, or do you think that they should be higher, did I?
Well, especially being, being new, I would keep them low, so that way you can build, you can build up on it, as you build more momentum. Uh, if they're too high to begin with, you're going to get a low participation rate.
Excellent, okay. Uh, Chris, you have, Christopher, you had something?
Yeah, I was going to say also, I mean, obviously, like we were saying, keeping them low, but have an option where people can make a donation for what they feel comfortable with. Because I mean, some of the, like, air energy and places like that, I think asking for. A thousand, five thousand, I mean, that's still pretty low for them, if we.
Right.
Some of those companies, ten thousand dollars is where they start at, so, uh, it's. Just having the option that they can do more if they would like, or someone can do, say a hundred dollars, if that's all they feel comfortable with.
Right. So are you suggesting like a, an, another type of category?
Yeah, I mean, we could have bronze, silver, and gold, and then, uh. Your own custom pledge.
Sure.
Or we can even do a platinum level.
Yeah, that's, I, I thought a platinum, and it's kind of, well, we can discuss with them what they would like to do at that level.
Uh-huh, right. Would the platinum level have an amount, or would that be open for the, part of the discussion?
It could be open for discussion, I don't think we want to kind of pigeonhole us on that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is perhaps two sec, a platinum level, then another where people could donate a hundred if they wanted to, or twenty-five?
So the platinum level would be a cus, custom built to.
Okay.
Their donation amount, and then the others, what they're comfortable with, whether a hundred dollars, or whatever.
So that could be what, kind of terminology that Gary was using, like the title sponsor would be that platinum level, they would be our. They would be.
What do you think about, in the other category of having a company pledge a certain amount of volunteer hours, or is that too much work? If they didn't have the money?
Oh. I, I think I'm open for anything. I think we should.
In-kind sponsorship.
Yeah. So like an in-kind volunteer hour sponsorship?
Yeah, like in-kind sponsorship.
Yeah.
And instead of money, they're, let's say. But the money wise guys, you know, like they decide that instead of giving money, they're going to bring their entire company down. For an event, or they commit themselves to multiple events, or anything like that, we, we have some stuff like that up here. Where some of the sponsors just provide in-kind, and they just show up and have their whole company out, do an outing.
Uh, Chris, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I was just removing my hand up from the.
Oh, okay. Got it. Alright, so, uh, I'm hearing a platinum or, or title sponsorship, had, on the other end of the spectrum, an other. Opening, and then an in-kind volunteer commitment to a certain level of volunteer hours, as part of the. Part of it. Is that, have I captured the different? Categories?
I think it sounds great, I was also wondering, is, if Ray could provide us maybe some example letters of keep Kern, or sorry, keep Bakersfield beautiful, and. Keep California beautiful, just for examples, just so we could kind of. See what other options are out there.
Hmm, I like it.
Yes, ma'am.
Available. Thanks, Ray.
Yeah, anything, Ray, that has been successful, I think we'd be interested in. Exploring. Okay. Okay. Okay, so that's item five. Item six is a presentation by Myra on cleanup efforts.
Yes. So I'll be making this report on behalf of Karina Mendez. Uh, so for the November update, uh, for half household hazardous waste collections. There is an upcoming event in Tehachapi, November 19th. And, uh, on November 26th, there will be events in Kern Valley and Bridge Crest. At December 3rd, Tehachapi, December 10th in Bridge Crest. December 17th in Tehachapi, December 24th in Bridge Crest. And as far as bulky waste collection events, uh, there will be in a, uh, there was an event in Shafter on October 15th. Uh, it was at the county admin building. Uh, and then the Caesar Chavez Environmental Court and American Refuge. Uh, the results, uh, that they provided was a traffic count of 45 and tonnage of 2.57. And then there was an event in Rosamond on November 1st. Um, it was WMI offices, uh, Caesar Chavez Environmental Court and Waste Management, Inc. And the results reported were a traffic count of 28. As far as higher amnesty events in Eastern Kern, uh, which included Boron, Kern Valley, Mojave, Bridge Crest and Tehachapi. Uh, that was on, oh, that will be happening on December 10th. Uh, so for the rapid statistics that they provided, the public works illegal dump cleanup crews and homeless homelessness code compliance crews, uh, they cleared 4,318, uh, dump sites countywide. Uh, the countywide tonnage provided was 944 tons. Mattresses collected countywide were 1,075, recycled were 922. Encampments cleared were 417, homeless individuals contacted were 695. And that is all.
Wow. Wow. Very, thank you. Any comments around that presentation? Okay, let's see. The number seven is committee member announcements or reports. Are there any committee member announcements or reports? Okay. Next item eight, staff comments. Yes, please.
Um, I, I'm sorry. I had to go do a kid pickup at school. Um, I have, uh, a bulk item community cleanup up in Wasco this Saturday, um, and I'll forward the flyers to Alicia's email.
Thank you. It, it really surprises me how much is picked up. I'm always the, the tonnage is hard for me to imagine. So thank you. Um, staff comment, committee. So any, number eight is staff comments.
I have, I have the comment. Uh, so I'm Myra Chimalia. I assist Alicia with whatever she needs at the office, um, at the Department of County of, um, Kern County Public Works. Um, I'm assisting her with the keep America beautiful report and the volunteer portal. I did send an email out on October 26th, uh, to get information and stats on previous, uh, and upcoming cleanup information. Um, we extended the due date. Um, if you have not spoken with me already, it was through email. So if you can email me back, uh, by Wednesday, November 30th, that'd be great.
Okay. That go out to everyone, Myra. I know I received it. And everyone received it on the committee? Is that correct?
Yeah, if, if, uh, they didn't receive an email, I would just check their junk mail just in case, but it was sent on October 26th.
Okay.
So if they want to double check on that, if not, they can email me or Alicia.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment?
Yes, I've got, um, comment about last Saturday, we had America Recycles Day at the rubber, at the Mechanics Bank Arena parking lot, which went very well. Kern County Public Works, once again, accepted batteries from all the residents. Um, we had a great, about seven different vendors taking items to be recycled and then the city did also combined a bulky waste event. So I'll have all those numbers hopefully by next week so I can send to keep Kern beautiful, keep Bakersfield beautiful, keep California beautiful and keep America beautiful. And this event can go toward Kern County's numbers for their annual report.
Excellent. Excellent. Kind of circling back around on that, on the fundraising letter, is it, is it appropriate to put some of this countywide stuff? Or it should it be just the committee, the things that the committee's doing? What, is it should it stay just with committee impact? Like the, like Linda's cleanup and Gary's cleanup, is that what we should focus on in terms of impact in the county?
Yes, it should be your committee alongside, of course, Kern County Public Works. But it's what you, your committee is doing in the community.
Okay.
Is what the focus should be, my opinion.
Got it. I'm sure you're right. Okay. Any other public comment? Thank you. Thank you, Ray. All right, then our next meeting is Wednesday, December 21st at 2:00 to 3:00 PM. And I'm sure that we will be notified as we always are. And so if there are no other public comments, we'll adjourn. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you all for your time.
You want me to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh. Yeah, well, and I appreciate you knowing what to do. Uh, thank you.
A second emotion.
Okay. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.